Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'll begin tonight's special meeting with an invocation now. Would you be so kind to stand?
Lord, as we embark upon this meeting tonight to conduct business of the city, God, I ask that you grant us wisdom, Lord, to conduct it in a way that is pleasing to you and benefits the city. God, let us be reminded that this is a week, a month of Thanksgiving. This is a week of Thanksgiving, and your word says in everything, give thanks. And as we come here tonight, God, I just want to honor you. I want to give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And I ask that you continue to bless this city as we move forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Gill. Now, following the order, this special city council meeting, November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, City of Oak Hill, West Virginia. Our clerk will now give our roll call.
Mayor Farrel Briscoe.
Here.
Ward one, Diana Janey.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Terry Van Busker is absent. Ward two, Chris Gill.
Here.
PJ Elder.
Here.
Tim Buskis.
Here.
And Councilman Large, Phil Hannah Bass is absent.
Thank you. Moving into our unfinished business. Number one is the consideration of the planning commission's recommendation on the vape shop ordinance tabled from the last meeting. This is the second reading.
Is there any questions about this? We've gone over it a couple times. The vape ordinance, that's the amount of space that you could have between those fifteen hundred feet, and then also the addition of the claws where it has to be that far away from churches, synagogues, all of the religious institutions. Do you have a question about that?
That's all in the first paragraph, right.
Correct, sir.
Do you want to say?
No.
Okay. All right. Now we have a vote, please.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept this as the second reading.
I second it. We have a motion in the second to accept the consideration of the planning commissions on the vape shop ordinance. This is the second reading. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? The motion is carried. Number two, the consideration of election changes. This was tabled from the last meeting. This is also a second reading.
So the election changes, as we went over before, this is in accordance with the new law set forth by the state. The main part of this is that we will now be having the counties to run our elections. This will save a tremendous amount of staff time and money, and it will also align us under a crowd, being that this will be now on the general election ballot for the president and governor and all the other major elections. Hopefully increasing voter turnout. So it's positive in many ways. The caveat is, is we're extending your own terms. Get that lined up with the current elections. Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance as I proposed it?
So our term's going to be extended to December thirty-first to twenty-twenty-eight, correct?
Correct, sir.
It's an eighteen-month extension.
Right.
As forbidden by state and specifically established, I would say.
Because then the election would be held in November twenty-twenty-eight, and then whoever is elected there would take office on January first of twenty-twenty-nine, or January the second of twenty-twenty-nine.
Do you just need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make that motion for the consideration of election changes to align us up for how they want to do it.
I second it. All right, barring no fighting with you guys, if you can stay on each other that long, eighteen more months.
I think we can do it.
And we have a motion in a second to adopt the election changes. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Number three, our consideration of creating a new ordinance for the city logo associated with code one dot zero six dot zero two zero. This is the second reading.
This was proposed recently. Councilman Gill brought this up in a meeting, and after some research and looking for, we decided to, we came up with what we proposed to council, which is a ordinance that changes the current ordinance in place, which only referenced the city's seal. It also references city logo and any other branding materials that we may use in the future, such as the one that we've been working for the parts, part system. So without express written consent from council or city manager, this cannot be used for any application at all. So it's now going to be in code that you can't use it, any promotional materials without our express authorization. And that is, that is penalty, pen, the penalty for that is actually pretty massive. If you look at that, they sent out a thousand flyers with our logo, one of you can be penalized for each flyer that was sent out. So we are still, got the paperwork in, waiting on trying to get it, like trademarked or whatever. This is just in our ordinance. This is, this is going ahead and getting it started as far as that goes. The trademark is a national thing. Right. But there's a saying that no one can use that without our consent.
Maybe we have a motion.
Set your motion, Chris.
I'll motion to accept this as the second rating for the consideration of a new ordinance for the city logo associated with one point zero six point zero two zero.
I'll see.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the creating a new ordinance for the city logo. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Number four, we have an anticipated executive session. Anything's changed?
Yeah, there's nothing.
Okay. All right, then we are moving along to new business. New business on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, the planning commission made the recommendation to council to approve the zoning classification change for the property owned by Christopher Toller, located at one sixteen Mall Road, parcel nine dash four dash six four, from B two general business district to B three highway business district.
So this has been approved with, I don't know, was it an unanimous decision by the planning commission?
Yes.
There was a little bit of discussion with the, the planning commission. The general consensus was that they did, they were going to approve it. However, they didn't feel that this was Toller's use might not be the highest and best use of that property. He's talked about putting his storage units and having a storage yard there. Was it going to be allowable in this, in this change? Is that correct?
Yes, it's current.
Please, please do.
Um. I do. Did you guys get a chance to look at SharePoint, at any of these documents for this item? No, okay. You're going to hand those out, so you can reference them.
So you said storage buildings. Is this the same guy that had the storage buildings there last year that we had the issue with?
Currently, that parcel is split into two uses. So it's all one parcel, but he uses half of it to rent to G one repairs, which that usage as an automotive repair center is permitted. The other half is rented to Michael's Electric, and it is a storage yard. It's heavy equipment storage. Either way you look at it, it is not permitted. It could be conditional, but Mr. Toller opted to go for a land classification change instead of going for a conditional use permit. He would like to see more flexibility with the classification of a B three.
He's, he's currently, that, that whole lot that he has there is currently B two?
Yes. Yes.
What is everything, what is everything else around there?
Um, at the end of Mall Road, so all of, like Kroger, it leads to Kroger, Big Lots.
Everything, everything you see in red there is B two.
So it would be a spot zone.
All the way up there. Yes.
My, can I ask a question here? And, and I know may, and some of this you may, you may not know. I, I was looking here at the background, and it says prior owner Deluxe Transportation, who used that part of it for the same purpose before this guy had it, um, leads to Michael's Electric without a conditional use permit. So they just did it.
Yes.
Like, I apologize for some of the stuff you're falling into, people just doing things in violation of B two zoning. And the city notified Deluxe Transportation at that time that the conditional use permit was required for them to park the trucks and do what they were doing.
Correct.
Okay, then it appears here Deluxe stated that the use would be discontinued because the property was being sold, and their account ended. So they sold it. They got off, and it's no longer their problem no more. And then Mr. Toller was informed by the city prior to purchasing the property that the use of the property as a storage yard violated the zoning regulations.
Without a conditional use.
Without a conditional use. So he was aware of that, right?
From my understanding.
Yes. And then due to the zoning issue, the city has not issued a municipal license to Mr. Toller for leasing the property to Michael's Electric. So they don't have a business license. He, he, he was told that this, he had to come and get a conditional use and, and he submitted a license application on September the fifth, and it says the start date is August the first, but I guess that hasn't been approved because it doesn't have a zoning, right?
Correct.
And then Michael's Electric, for conducting business within the city, doesn't have a business license. Because it says they're not collecting B and O from them either.
Correct.
So they're just. My personal, this is just my opinion, but I would ask that everybody go in and, and state their opinion of it, and I wish everyone was here, but is that I think I think you should have to apply for a conditional use permit. Myself, I'm not a fan. We've been stiff on spot zoning since the beginning, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of spot zoning, but someone can, you know, convince me why. Maybe if you are, please tell me why and help me see it, because I'm thinking it apply for a conditional use permit. Or, because Michael's isn't going to be there forever. They're subbed out for this power contract. It's the power lines that's going in. And then that's a spot zone in the middle of, what is six and three and seven? That's outside the city, right? That's a partial that's outside city limits.
Yeah, what is that, the one stop?
Yeah, that looks like that's outside city limits, right?
Yeah, it's a
Yeah, so I mean, that would be put in that one spot right there at B three to do whatever with. So please, go ahead. I know you're itching to say something. Cut me out.
I don't know if that's the case. So that whole area is next to a highway. I think that it's a bigger conversation of zoning in a comprehensive way. However, there are certain types of storage units, facilities that are also conditional in a B two. So I do think that there still would be room for Mr. Toller to execute some of the, you know, ways that he wants to use this property, even through going through the B Z A for conditional uses. Now, if there are other thoughts around, that he has around what he specifically wants to do other than storage, I'm not aware of that. But I understand the hesitancy to spot zone, so.
So I guess in the past, I wish Mr. Hannah Bass was here, because he, he was a bit more familiar with it. I think in the past, we got into some problems with some spot zoning throughout the city. And I think it's haunting us today. So everybody is wary about just jumping in. I know things may have been done in the past, but wary of just jumping in and spot zoning, you know, for this one and not this and this and this. And I, I kind of like what you said, being along the highway, maybe the whole area might have been better to be in a B three or a larger conversation. I, I comprehensive plan or something. I see, I understand that, too. The blue right there, what is?
That's an R two.
That's R two residential. So there is no B three near there.
We don't have a lot of B three. Tyler zooms out.
The piece up by the Pizza Hut down there is a B three, right?
Yes, the Holiday, Holiday Lodge, and then
Yeah. I see the zoning there says B three, says highway business district. And so everything else is B two.
I may say, I think looking at the entire zoning, that comprehensive plan, it was the way we go with this, it's changing the zoning from one course like that, looking at spot zones, so I don't think it's looking at.
I don't like it myself.
There's, there are places where you've got some, some very volatile zones where, you know, things are, but
Can you elaborate on that, what they were thinking? The planning commission, was, what they had said, why?
They think that, that's okay. They think that it made sense for it to be a B three due to its location. And they agreed that the property is, would be suited for more flexible use.
I'd argue that.
And it was unanimous from, from only commissioning, but
We had a forum. There were four out of the six.
Was there something?
We had a forum of four, so we didn't have all six members present that evening, but the four that were present voted unanimously.
Originally applied for a conditional use permit, then chose to, to zoning. I just want to write the members of that board set up didn't want to do spots. Is that what that is?
Would this be spots? Yes.
So he could apply for a conditional use permit through the B Z A.
Yes.
And they could get, and he could do what he's doing now.
Yes.
And get the license now.
Yes.
And this, then we could do a larger scale of zoning comprehensive, look at maybe the one more B three along that area up there.
Yes.
That's what I like myself. As for me, I'm not trying to persuade anyone. That's just me.
Conditional use permit, I can, I can go with that, just, it's just for that. And then for whatever reason, he sells or decides to do something else, we're not stuck in that. And the spot zone, you build, change one area, B two, B three.
Can you throw up what B three is allowed in B three? If used to granite?
Blow them all, please.
Okay, I understand. Instead land use table, that, just when you said that, I was like, oh, that is. Yeah, that's fine. That's okay. That's okay. Does anybody have anything you wanted to say to have or? Yeah.
Mr. Toller, would you like to address the council?
Number one, we don't know what we're going to do with that property.
Will you mind coming up to the?
We, when we bought that property, we thought it would use for a lot of different reasons. The planning and zoning commission kind of thought, well, they like to see some more retail. But if you look at the malls down there, most of those have got a lot of empty spaces, it's never been filled with retail. But that property there is kind of a rugged, rugged looking piece of property. And it's, uh, going to require. A, a lot of, uh, additional work before it could ever be developed. For, uh, some kind of retail business and things of that nature. But we felt like when we, uh, bought the property and looked at it. That it was, uh. B three zoning, which is allowed in the city of Oak Hill. And if you got B three zoning, I, I don't know why you would be hesitant to, to zone something, that's a highway business district there. And it's not, uh, in a confined, it's not inside the mall area there. It's all B two. But this is kind of like outside of that, separate from that. And, um. We just felt like that, uh, you know, that, for whatever we decide to do with it in the future, that to be three zoning. Would be something that would be more suitable, that we wouldn't have to go back. Uh, to town four to get a different zoning and trying to get, uh. Zoning changes made on, so, yeah. That was our, uh, plan to do with it that way, and we wanted to try to comply with the, uh. Zoning code, uh, with that, uh, lay down yard being there. And, um. But, uh, you know, they're not gonna be there very long, I think, uh, they told us until February, when they was leaving. But, um. It's, uh. I can rest assured, one thing, we won't put anything in there to be negative. I mean, most of our development, we've got twenty million dollars worth of property in Raleigh County. Uh, most of Harper Park over there. And, um. We've, uh, not developed anything that anybody or any town, any municipality would be ashamed of. Anything we would do with the property would be something that would be beneficial. And would, um. Be, uh. Producted from the city of, you know. We were just trying to. Libiate, uh, having to go back and go back and go back, we just looked at the. Uh, uses in the B two and B three zoning, and we felt like that B three zoning. Better suit us for any possible thing we want to do at later date.
Would you be opposed to getting the conditional use permit and then giving council some time to look over the zoning changes?
No, you know, it's, uh, I, I wouldn't be, you know, I mean, it wouldn't bother me that much, uh, if I wanted to do the conditional use. Like I said, we, the reason we done it is, is to try to. Keep having to come back later on if. If we decided to do something that. You know, but if, if that's what the city council wants to do, that's, that's your loss prerogative. You know, my stand on it is if you've got B three zoning in this town. And it's a highway business district. Which that is right on the main highway, and I don't see why, uh, you may say it's spot zoning, but maybe the whole area has been zoned improperly. You know? Um, B two is, uh, was a business zoning, but. Uh, B three highway business district, uh, you know, it's more suitable for them. But, you know, it's, it's left up to you all, you all, decision makers. But, you know, if, if you got the, uh, additional use for that. We would have to go along with that. But we don't know what the conditional use is gonna be right now, it's a problem, yeah.
Right.
Cause we're on a short term without other people there and. And, uh, that's why we wanted to deal with the, uh. B three zoning.
We could do a conditional use for the stores. Or the lay down.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna put the storage for self.
Yes.
If we're going to put anything in there storage wise, it's gonna be. Like larger buildings, uh, that we could, uh, offer storage for boats, campers. And things of that nature, you know, it's not the, uh. Small stories now. That, that's about the only storage thing, and, and it's got a billboard on it also too, and I think that's a. I think that's a B three, that, that building would stay there for quite some time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phyllis.
So what were the condition, what would that allow you to do?
It was a new, actually.
So. If. Uh, that's. You gotta, you gotta have two months worth of readings, even if you was to, if you was to accept a recommendation. Right, you'd have to have another, this would go into January before you could pass it. Am I correct with that, or am I thinking?
I, I don't. Mr. Phyllis, we're not really changing an ordinance, we, do we have to have two readings of a zoning change?
Um. I think, I think there's a third day period.
Third day wait period.
And I think you have, you have to have a public hearing on it, it's changing. I, I'll have to research that and look into it before I came over, right, I don't know if we've done that before. Uh, I feel the issue here as I see. And, and one of, uh, that's race up concern, I don't disagree with anything that you told us, see, and. Uh, but the spot zoning is. That's what's requested, that's all you can add on that. Say. Generally something. So we try, try to agree.
So what I was thinking too is if it's, if he said they're out of there in February, if it takes us all the way up to. You know, thirty days, we're into January before we can even, could even pass something. Then. I don't. I don't know that that helps. I mean, it does for him for a B three. And I don't disagree with you one bit. I, I think a larger thing needs to be looked at there. On a. A bigger scale, other than just that one little spot, a hole. Cause I, I agree, I agree with you. But. The, the thing that we've had is, we've had a lot of problems over the past few years. Spot zoning one little spot in the city. It's something other than what's not around it, and it's caused a lot of.
Or what?
The comprehensive plan, when do we do that?
Hannah, can you elaborate on this? Cause you're involved.
Yes. Um, so zoning is the second phase of the comprehensive plan, right now we're still in phase one. Um, I do not recall what specific month we are going to start on zoning, I know it will be next year. Potentially mid-year, twenty twenty six, so.
I don't think it was closer to fall.
Yeah. Then we start with zoning before we do signage, and signage is like December twenty twenty six, so. Sometime between mid-year and December is when we'll start with zoning.
So if we did the conditional use permit, and then after they do whatever they do, and then they see the bigger picture, I need to be of these.
I don't know how like, I guess exactly word this, but I'm gonna motion that we. Um. Shouldn't think how to word this.
So thi- this is a request, right, a recommendation?
Yes, this is a recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. To. Not accept the recommendation from the planning commission. For the or, for the zoning, the spot zone, the B three. At this time. And refer it back to future. Um. What am I trying to say here? Consideration for a larger area.
Okay, we're gonna copy it from planning.
Yeah. Yeah, and advise Mr. Toller to. Seek a. Conditional use permit. For the time for now.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. I think that is the end of our agenda, does anyone have any comments? Mr. Toll, thanks for coming. Happy early birthday to Councilman Jamie. And, uh, if not, our minds are clear, happy Thanksgiving to all of you at home as well, and to all of you here. We are now, Jared, have a good night.